One, and I'm ready to roll. Welcome, everybody, to the February eighth Chesapeake Beach Town Council informational work session. Let's record read that the entire council is present at this time. We'll do a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We're going to begin this evening with Chris Jakubiec giving us an update on the comprehensive plan process. The Chris, before you begin, I just want to, you know, thank you for all the work and dedication that you've put into this process this past year. I mean, it's been 2020 was just one, you know, one heck of a year, but you know, between the pandemic, new members going, you know, off and on the boards. I think you might have had three different chairman. And of course, we had an election as well going on. So I really applaud your staying with this. And having said that, I'll just going to give you the microphone, sir. Take it away.
Okay. We had four chairman, actually, but three chairman, one.
Got you.
So I'm going to share my screen with everybody. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. It's nice to be here. I thought I'd just quickly take you through a just a quick PowerPoint, just to use you to where we are in the process of preparing the plan. And I think we're really close. I think we've worked out all the principal ideas and issues. And the most important part of the plan is the land use plan, the land use recommendations. Everything else is attached to it or falls away from it. And there are five major policy areas. One, adapting to the vulnerabilities of sea level rise, conserving the town's heritage neighborhoods. And by that, we mean those neighborhoods that are traditional to the town that are essentially at sea level or near the water, including the campgrounds neighborhood and the middle subdivision and between those. Guiding commercial recreational and civic uses into centers or town centers, protecting and preserving the remaining forests within the town and even on the edge of the town, and protecting small town character through new and revised development standards. So the sort of the foundational work is related to sea level rise. It's kind of the existential issue facing the town over the next few decades. These two images show existing conditions. The one on the left shows existing marshes. You can follow my cursor. That symbol means marsh or swamp, wetland. And this blue, green, blue is the water fishing creek. The next slide, oops, sorry. This image shows the flood plain, the existing flood plain, which, if you know the flood plain, it's the 100-year flood plain, which means there's a 1% annual exceedance probability. In other words, there's a 1% chance the flooding would exceed this area that's shown in these striped areas. And this is typically what we know to be the flood plain comes up and wraps around Callum's field. And but in the future, by 2050, we expect some significantly different vulnerabilities to face the town. And a lot of the planning that we've been doing is about that. It's fundamental to the to the plan and everybody statewide, all coastal communities are thinking through these issues. The scientists, the Maryland Climate Change Consortium, they all believe a 2.1 foot rise in sea level is highly likely, like 80% accuracy in the year 2050. So 30 years from now, 29 years from now. So what what means, what this means is it changes the flood zone considerably. Now, everything that's blue here is open water. This is, oh, by the way, this is the north part of town. But here's Maryland 260, sorry, Chesapeake Beach Road, Maryland 261. Here's the wastewater treatment plant. And North Beach Volunteer Fire Company. So everything that's dark blue is going to be open water. And as you know, most of this today is just wetlands. It's marshland. We are moving to a point where that's going to be, in all likelihood, open water, which means that the flood zone extends away from it in all directions. It also means whatever area floods today will flood deeper tomorrow in the future. So the color I want to bring out to you is this one, this lighter blue, but not the lightest blue, is 10% annual exceedance probability. Everything on here, like the parking lot for the volunteer firing company, one in 10 chance of having a flood as big as that or bigger, covering that much area. And if you go to symbol B there and go down to the chart, that means it'd be 0.9 feet of depth of water in in 2050. In the 1% flood or the typical 100-year flood, that water will be 300 or 3.5 feet deep. And in the 500-year flood, such as Isabel, be 5.4 feet deep. So these are truly serious vulnerabilities that the town will be facing. You can see Maryland 261 is projected to be deeply underwater at a 1 to 10 chance in a given year. Now, if we go to the right-hand side of this image, our slide, we see the center of town, the town's center. Maryland 261 Basai Road comes through. Here's Fishing Creek Marina and the town, the town hall right here. And you can see everything around Fishing Creek Marina that today is fairly high and dry. It's pavement, it's boat parking and the like. And Gordon Stinnett Avenue has a 10% chance of flooding in any given year. Today, this is a 100% chance. And the item D or right there in that 10% chance, 1.2 feet deep, in the typical 100-year flood, 3.8 feet deep of water measured at that point. So we're facing some real vulnerabilities, both on the north side of Fishing Creek and on the south side and Harbor Road. As you can see, if you pass Abner's Marina, head down our Harbor Road, this area is underwater. This is not just flood plain. This is underwater in the next 30 years. Of course, it doesn't happen on year 2050. It's gradual. But by 2050, this is the the expected coverage. Now, in terms of organizing the plan, the big picture, and we obviously have to accommodate that foundational environmental condition, but the land use summary is kind of summarized in this. We would imagine having a gateway commercial focal point as you come into Chesapeake Beach Road. And this idea has been consistent for since we first worked with the planning commission. What could happen in here has changed over time. But basically, it's going to be a commercial focal point where we hope to revitalize the the area into an attractive area with traffic calming, restaurants and business opportunities. Then the town center itself, which we imagine to be a very compact area, just on the edge of the flood plain, just the future flood plain, but very close to the town hall, just behind traders. Picture that. And then the maritime district, which is as it is today, Marina's hotels, restaurant. And then the Hilltop Commercial Focal Point. As you know, these areas here are zoned for commercial now. And some of the commercials have been struggling a bit over the past decade or so. And the plan is to help revitalize that as a locally serving commercial area. But the big one we want to care about is that we care about most is the town center idea. And this is what residents said in surveys and public comment that they most liked. And these pictures kind of illustrate what the consensus now on the planning commission is for that town center. So there'd be an outdoor area plaza where people could gather special events, festivals, or even just regular, you know, normal weekends. It would provide a place for people to move from the resort part of town into greater part of the town and then spread the wealth, if you will. Up here on the left shows a two and a half story buildings. That's the maximum that would be allowed. So this could have residential above commercial in this town center concept. Maxed height would be 35 feet, which is the maximum height now in our residential zones. Small businesses like bicycle rentals, repairs, cafes, coffee shops. Here's another picture of, you know, a potential building that would seem to be compatible. This steps back out now. We're looking at the area from above. And this light blue area is the sea level impact zone that I showed you earlier. It encompasses Callum's Field. And this is the kind of the vision for Callum's Field. These illustrations are borrowed for this purpose. These are not designed just for Chesapeake Beach. They're meant to indicate a theme of accommodating the rising water levels through marshlands that can be created through changes in the grade and slope, the creation of berms, protecting areas for athletic facilities like over here. You know, that's the Callum Field football field. It sort of works out just right, actually, on our plan. But then the grade kind of slows down very natural. And so these are the kind of the big picture visions for what happens there. This is a plan that we actually did for the town center, a concept for how Chesapeake Beach could develop a town center scaled down to a small town character. And just for perspective, this right here, where you see my pointer, is the town hall.
Hey, Chris.
Yes?
I apologize for a quick comment. I've seen this before, this sketch. And I know some other people have been wondering about it. Where is the parking in this sort of concept? Is there a parking garage that would need to go along with this sort of recapture of existing parking spaces at Callum's?
Yeah.
Hey, Chris. Hey, Chris, Greg. Hold on a second, Chris.
Yes.
I'll allow you to answer, you know, the councilman's own question, but we are going to wait until you're done before we take questions. But since Greg did ask it, go ahead and answer it. But I'll ask the council to please wait until Chris is finished. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, sure. Firstly, this is a, this is a concept. It's not, you know, it's not designed to address just parking. But we have thought through a lot of those ideas. So parking would be allowed on this road that would come into the town center idea. So you would have parking here. You'd have parking along the town hall. You'd have parking on the opposite side as well. You'd have the service drive here. This would be parked on both sides of the street. As you go through the circle, right before you get to it, you could slip off, sorry, slip off to the right, and there's parking back here and parking here. These parking facilities exist today. So and of course, you know, that's so that's, that's the intention is to distribute parking in smaller pieces throughout. The other part of this is to encourage walking. We have a walkability plan that's shaping up now. We're encouraging people to bike and walk. So we have a design that accommodates a lot of different ways of getting there. Okay. The planning commission's really recognized a lack of park space in the town and also great opportunities to create a, in this picture, a what we call Veterans Community Park and Pier. I don't know that this idea has to happen at Veterans Park. It may be quite controversial and difficult to get that accomplished. But maybe it's a, in the future, there is a pier that goes out into the water. You create park, a park space out there. And you harken back to the heritage of the town where activities, destinations were out on the water. And so the planning commission is really enamored with this idea. And the chairman has already written up some language that really captures the essence of this this concept. So these ideas are likely to find their way into the draft plan we send you. And then the other major part of this plan is to preserve natural resources and especially the forest areas. And you can see everything green on the on the town's map is existing forest. Many of the major subdivisions, well, all of them, have some level of forest conservation. However, not all of them are protected by forest conservation easement. Some are simply set aside as open space. And the plan is to make certain that those areas always retain their forest character and that these residual parcels never be up for development in the future. And so there, here's one parcel here that would be resource conservation, which is only partially forested now, but it's a part of a steep slope. And here are more more detailed areas woodlands. These are kind of a lot of this is contained within the the original platted subdivision of the town where the lots are on the kind of paper lots. They could never really be developed, at least without severe environmental harm. So the plan is to sort of acknowledge that. And rather than zoning them commercial, zone them resource conservation, which is a category that's already in the town's code. And lastly, we know that the wetlands are moving. They're migrating. And we call it a wetland or water convergence area. It's where the wetlands are actually moving away from the water. And and here's an example, just next to Fishing Creek, by the boatyard maintenance area at the Marina. Of course, at Abner's, at the open space or the the area beyond the former boat inlet, of course, it's been filled in now, but that area is expected to be underwater. And slowly, it's merging. And you can actually see it now out on the site. It's quite remarkable. And then down here, I'm in the here's the Quality Built Homes Project, Chesapeake Village. A lot of these areas are still owned by the developer. And the planning commission would like to see those, and even the town space, given a land use designation and a zoning designation that protects the underlying resource. The Randall Cliff Natural Heritage Area is already protected by resource conservation. So we would use that same category for the forest on the other side. Oh. Okay, so those are the the main points that I wanted to touch on. It doesn't cover everything comprehensively, but I think that's the big picture of the plan that will be coming to you hopefully in the near term.
Well, thank you, Chris. I'm sure the council has some some questions. So if if you're you're done with your presentation, I'll begin with Derek and work my way around the around the dais, so to speak.
Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you, Chris. Thanks for coming tonight and sharing this with us. I was particularly excited to hear you that you thought this was done. My expectation was that we were quite a ways off. So I'm happy to hear that. Couple things, and then I'll I'll pass up my time for the others. If you could go back a couple slides to the forest area, forest conservation areas, you were talking about that. Could we go back to that slide, please?
This one?
Yeah.
Oops.
Might have been, yeah, either there or one previous. I don't recall. But anyway, you were talking about forest conservation areas. Yeah, it would be, yeah, this one here, forest conservation area. So a couple questions on that. I know that's not a current zoning district that we have currently. So is that, do I understand that would be a proposed new zoning district that we would consider?
Well, we have a zoning district that's called Resource Conservation.
Right, right. You mentioned that and some others, but you mentioned a forest conservation area.
Okay, so when I referred to forest conservation area, I was referring to the the parts of a development tract that are required to retain, be retained in forest. Many of those are protected by forest conservation easements. The developer is required to place an easement on them. And then the town is required to ensure that people stay out of it in terms of development activities. So a great deal of this green land is protected by forest conservation easement, but not all of it.
You said protected from development. What kind of development? Is that construction, you know, buildings, homes, or does that, would that include pathways, walkways? I mean, how does that quantify?
Yeah, it includes anything that would remove trees. You literally, you couldn't build a shed in there. However, you would be permitted to build trails under certain circumstances. We'd have to read the conservation easements that apply to the properties, but generally, some type of low-impact trails would be would be allowed. Because a lot of these are covered by critical area regulations. There'd be a lot of
Right.
regulatory approvals. But yeah, that's still very much a possibility. And it's something that's intrigued the planning commission that maybe there's a possibility making this part of a recreational resource or some parts of it, you know?
Okay, so resource, just generally, the resource conservation areas, which these would, the forest areas would fall under, those generally aren't able to be developed in really any substantial way. Is that correct?
That is correct. There is some modest amount of development allowed and only enough to signal that the town is not taking all economic use out of a private property.
Okay.
So yeah, so that it's, so in a property that's not protected by forest conservation, it could be developed today under the current zoning categories. Right? So it could be under the residential plan development or under residential single family. But this proposal would be is that you wouldn't be able to do that. You could only develop it to the same extent that the developer of this, the panhandle here down here, could develop, which is essentially one house per five acres if it's clustered. And even that, in my view, might be a little too intense. And we might want to revisit that with a recommendation to lower that density.
Right, okay. And that actually kind of leads to my second question. Good transition. So at one point, you'd mentioned in the town center, 35 feet height, same as, which is the same as residential. So but that's a commercial zone. So what you're saying is 35 feet in a commercial zone as well?
Yeah, the planning commission would, has introduced a draft proposal, proposed ordinance to reduce building height to 35 feet everywhere. So where the building height today can be 50 feet in the residential zone, it would be 35 feet. And that would be a recommendation from this plan, along with a proposed text amendment. Of course, in the maritime district, you can get to 70 feet. So again, 35 feet would be the cap.
Right, understood. Okay. And then one other, and this is actually more suggestion or request. So a year, year, year and a half ago, the Ethics Commission provided us a pretty substantial, you know, rewrite of the ethics code. And when they provided that to us, they provided us what I call a crosswalk, like a table or a summary of what, you know, was what's in the current plan versus what's in the new plan, just to show where where the differences are. Is that some, could I request that from the from the zoning commission as well? When they provide us the draft plan, they also provide a crosswalk to kind of help us through that. So understand, you know, what's what's changed or what's being proposed to be changed.
Oh, yes, that's a great idea. Yeah, Erica, we'll certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, sir. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chris, for the presentation. It's really impressive, all the work you all put into this. And I'm always get more excited each time I see it. I like a lot of the concepts in it. So that's wonderful. I don't have specific questions about what's been presented tonight. I was hoping, though, that you could provide me with just or us with an overview of of next steps and kind of a general timeframe that you see this happening. So, you know, anyway, let me know if you need more info.
Okay, no, that's, that's perfect. We've got the about five chapters drafted now. The, there are some smaller chapters that deal with water resources. The transportation chapter is not drafted officially, but it's composed in a series of PowerPoints. So we're getting close to the final plan draft. The land use plan has been drafted and reviewed multiple times by the planning commission. And the last time, they provided final guidance that I'm incorporating into the draft. So we're looking at a spring, March, April timeframe where we, the planning commission, I think, I think, will be completed its work and ready to have a public hearing. That's, that's if we get all our meetings and we might even need a workshop for them. But yeah, we're zeroing in on this now. And my request to the chairman was that we not talk about the comprehensive plan again until we have the draft set before us. Because the planning commission really digs into these issues and we get deep into very specific matters, which are sometimes takes us away from the comprehensive vision of the plan. And I really want to keep the planning commission focused comprehensively on the big picture and until we get a draft ready. So, you know, if that happens, then we have a public hearing in the late spring. And therefore, a draft coming to the mayor and council in the summer, perhaps. So maybe late spring, early summer, then sending it to you for a public hearing, perhaps late summer, early fall.
Okay, all right. And then presuming there's no major changes or we don't get bogged down in anything. And then next steps after the comprehensive plan is passed, then what's next?
Well, I think some things have been advanced. As you may know, the town received five separate development projects, applications for five separate development projects. And the planning commission has already been thinking about drafting various zoning regulations, including the 35-foot height limit. But there are other things that they're very conscious on achieving in the near term. So it may be that in addition to the comprehensive plan, we deliver a series of text amendments to the zoning ordinance. Not to mention possibly even a new zoning map. So it's a comprehensive rezoning at the same time we get the plan done. Because that gives the planning commission the greatest assurance that they're putting their best effort on your table at once. And the concern is that if they don't do that, they may be faced with the possibility, real possibility of taking under formal consideration some or all of these five development projects and taking them under consideration using the current zoning rules. And those current zoning rules are not aligned with the planning commission's current vision for the town. You see, so typically, the next step would be to write zoning changes and have a new zoning map. But I think the planning commission is anxious to deliver those things to you at the same time as we deliver the draft plan. So the next step would be start reviewing plans under the new guidelines, the new standards.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
Appreciate it, Keith. Mr. Marsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jakubiec. Good evening. I just have a couple, a couple of questions here. I want to strongly echo Councilman Favre's request. When it comes to reviewing changes in text or on maps, we want to be able to easily view the changes, not have them kind of buried and have to kind of find them. I think that's probably pretty easy to do if we keep that in mind along the way. And again, both in text and a legally defined zoning map when it comes to review. It certainly, I like the way Councilman Favre put that, I think he called that a crosswalk, but the little bridge or something, just so that we can get to the point faster, which is, which are approving changes or discussing changes there. I want to, I want a clarification on something because it's important because I've been talking about it. But the, and I'm sorry if I misstate some of the facts here. That there was, there's an apartment building that was planned and permitted, I think. I don't remember the name of it. It was on a real property and the permit had expired. And I don't know if the applicant's going to reapply or he may or may not. But I was aware that the commission was considering the reduction in the height, you know, that thirty-five-foot height. But it sounded like that wouldn't apply in the maritime district. And that building, that permit was granted within the maritime district, right?
Yes, you may be referring to Harbor Vista South, which is located at the intersection of two sixty-one Basai Road and Harbor Road.
Right.
Right? Okay. So, yeah, that was, that had been approved by the planning commission two times. It was once approved about ten years ago and its approval expired. It was approved three years ago and its approval expired again. The developer has just submitted the application for a third time. If the planning commission recommends and you ultimately adopt a thirty-five-foot height limit, that project would not be able to be built. And that height limit would apply in the maritime zone. It would apply within the entire town.
Oh, okay. All right, well, that's pretty clear. My only other comment, I think, here, let's see. Oh, a couple, really. You mentioned that you felt that the commission was close with coming to what would be a pretty solid, and I'll call it a semi-draft of the comprehensive plan rewrite. Do all the commissioners feel that, share that optimism? Have you, have you had discussions with them and are they comfortable with the timelines that we're laying out in front of them?
I'm not certain. I think I am. At the last meeting, we actually presented this land use plan. And as I mentioned, for the second or third time, there was clear guidance on what it was, how it ought to be changed. And again, I think that's the most important part of this whole project.
So the commissioners feel then that within four months or so where they're going to have, they should be having something on, they're comfortable with that?
I don't know, Councilman Morris. I mean, just speaking as the staff to the commission, I haven't polled them. But that's the discussions I've had with the chairman and that's kind of how we're moving along. I'm powering ahead.
Okay, and all right. Well, I'll leave that, leave that where that is for right now then. My only other question is just something peripherally that came up in one of your maps here. And I know it looked like over Chesapeake Village, the developer still owns some residual, unimprovable, I think, parcels that surround that, 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 that community. And there were many around Richfield Station as well. And I was just wondering what the mechanism was to move those properties along? Are they going to turn, be turned into the town's trust for some natural preservation? Are they going to turn over to those HOAs just in perpetuity, undevelopable, undevelopable? And the main reason I'm asking is I know that in Richfield, it's been a long time coming. And there's just, it'll solve some problems when some of those parcels change over. Just wondering what the plan is or what the mechanism is, or if there is any, to force the developers to turn those properties over to some other entity that's mistaken that.
We haven't thought through the idea of forcing the property owners to turn anything over. We're simply thinking about preserving them long-term and doing what we can through the tools we have available, which would be the comprehensive plan and the zoning map. The concern is that while these areas are, are difficult to develop and to some extent, they've been used as open space in establishing the density for these developments, zoning rules can change. And, and we would like a zoning category that reflects the underlying condition of the land. And we'd like to prevent any further development there in perpetuity. So what we're thinking is simply using the resource conservation zone to do that. It's kind of a layer over top the other plat requirements that are already associated with those open spaces. But we haven't thought about the next step or a next step that might include, you know, town acquiring them or, or purchasing an easement over lands that are not yet protected by easement. We haven't thought through that yet.
Okay, well, thank you for, that was very educational. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg. Larry?
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Incredible job for just hanging in there, man. Thank you for hanging on. Wonder if it's possible to get copies of these slides so I can look at them a little closer. They're a little small on my screen here and I was wondering if I could get them.
Of course. I can send them the holly. You can get them out to everybody or I can send to you directly.
Second thing, you touched on this several times during the presentation. And we, council has just created a new climate change advisory group. Will the comprehensive plan updates specifically discuss steps that the town should be taking to protect ourselves from climate change?
Yeah, with respect to sea level rise, yes, that part of climate change, very much so. As I mentioned, that's, that's kind of foundational that, that drives a lot of the land use changes we're contemplating within, particularly in the center of the town and any areas that are but wetlands and forest areas. So yes, with regard to the sea level impacts from climate change, definitely. We haven't thought through anything else related to climate change.
All right. Last question. Comprehensive plans are intended to be a, a look into the future, forty years out, whatever timeline you want to use. Some, some timeline out into the future of what things should look like. The challenge, of course, in getting there, it's like going on a cross-country trip. It's not the destination. It's how the heck you're going to get there. Will there be any sort of a roadmap on how we're going to accomplish this comprehensive plan?
Well, there will be a section of the plan that discusses implementation. And so that will definitely be there. And the issues with respect to implementation will include doing a master plan for the town center, completing engineering studies to deal with sea level rise and both structural and non-structural means for accommodating sea level rise or blocking it. So the, of course, further zoning regulations and standards, perhaps changes to the subdivision regulations as well. There would be recommendations about what to do with all these town-owned platted streets that have not been built, typically they're alleyways. And we'll be recommending that a study be done to see if we could incorporate those areas into a walking system or path system through the town. So there'd be a whole variety of those types of further studies that the planning commission will recommend. And, and actually, an invitation to folks like the Green Team and Sustainable Communities Group to really focus economic development to help bring some of these projects about, these changes about.
Yeah, good. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
Yeah, I have a bunch of stuff. I don't want to take a ton of time because my colleagues have covered a fair amount of stuff. I want to echo the thanks. I'm also surprised to hear you say that you are nearly done. I think Greg's question is, I'm not sure I would have thought to ask it quite that way and I'm kind of glad that he did. So I don't know, that's probably as much informational as anything else. Short list of questions, Chris, and if I get it too much into the weeds and I'm not staying comprehensive enough, just stop me. In the commercial areas, can you go back to that slide of the commercial, of the area that shows the whole, the whole town? And you've got the various circled areas, particularly the commercial areas, one of the first slides that you showed. Yeah, that one, that one. So the Gateway Commercial Focal Point and the Hilltop Commercial Focal Point. These, to me, are really important areas. I know we focused a lot on the town center. But these areas, when we, when last we were talking about drafts of the plan, included two things I just wanted to ask you about. One was also the notion of commercial, of residential over commercial. And I'm wondering if that's still something that's being discussed? And also the possibility of the town helping to both encourage and control the development that might happen there? And I'm wondering if that's still part of the plan that you guys are working on?
Yeah, well, the first iteration of the plan that sustained itself for a while was that these would be mixed-use centers. These areas are zoned for commercial now and allow for residential above commercial. But the planning commission does not want to allow residential in these areas. And so this would be simply commercial, ground floor commercial. And it's not yet clear to me if we would change the current zoning to prohibit a residential unit above an existing business or if we would keep that in place. But the idea of facilitating a commercial revitalization strategy by allowing truly mixed-use development, where you might have a ground floor restaurant or cafe and two floors of residential, that has fallen by the wayside and will not be a part of this, this plan. But the fact that, but the fact is the town will still recommend, the planning commission will still recommend that the town engage in helping to revitalize these areas through access management improvements, through traffic calming, through coordinated sidewalk and signage planning. We want to adopt design standards that will guide how development will look in the future. And that would apply to each of these centers. And there would also likely be some changes to the zoning map because some of these parcels are commercial, but then there's residential right next to them and it's just not coordinated yet. So we know in order to make some of these areas actually developable, they might need to have a little bit more space so you could accommodate parking at a building, for instance, and landscaping and the sidewalks we want. There are some real limitations in each of these areas that are holding back the town's commercial development base.
Yeah, I mean, traditionally, you know, if you, if you look at those areas, they are not, in my opinion, they are not well-used. And I know that in earlier discussions, there, there was a lot of advocacy. I think you have a lot of the knowledge, you know, the education and background on this to make recommendations such that, that those areas can be successful. And I'm just wondering if in your professional opinion, this plan will accommodate a reasonable possibility for, for businesses to be successful there? Then maybe you can't answer that at this time. I respect that. But that's, that's something that's in the back of my mind.
I, I've long thought that a mixed-use development scenario would be a key to promote revitalization and the economic development of these small areas. And I never have in mind anything other than a quaint kind of mixed-use, small-town character type of project. But the planning commission is really concerned about having new residential development. And the draft plan that I'm writing will not allow residential there. So it's a, the planning commission is, has not followed my recommendation on that part of the plan.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. The last question I have, back to the forest parcels. It is, it is legal to build trails. That's what, that's what Derek and you sort of agreed on?
I almost, I'm almost certain it is, but I hesitate a little bit to say that for certain. It may be in some cases that the areas that have forest conservation easements may need an amendment to the easement. Of course, the town is the party to the forest conservation easement. But we do that in coordination with Maryland DNR. But you might recall, we have a section of the railway trail that goes through the forest, which is protected by forest conservation easement. And it's actually protected by Forest for Interior Dwelling Birds easement as well. And we were successful in getting that built. So there is resistance to that, but it's not unheard of. That would probably mean you're not taking a lot of trees down. It's a very thoughtful pathway that's carved through the area. There's no building that takes place in there. But if it's for that kind of public recreational benefit, it's limited, ecological footprint is small. I think we're okay.
And so one of the things that we had run into, Chris, in talking about walkability plans, was some areas where we wanted to build trails and there were significant restrictions about ADA issues and safety issues and so on. If the area is zoned in this sort of forest conservation, does that permit more rugged? You know, the notion that some of the trails may be more rugged, they may not accommodate all the ADA requirements by virtue of the fact that it's really impossible to do so without, without changing the environmental impact. How do, how do those two forces meet to sort of come to reconciliation?
That's a fantastic question. I just don't know. I'd be speculating on that. I just don't understand the ins and outs of that, that issue. But something I can get back to you on, a very excellent question.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind knowing that as we're also, you know, talking about prioritizing some of our walkability projects. And I have nothing else, but great job on this so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And Valerie, thank you for being patient. You're up, madam.
My pleasure, Chris. It's a pleasure. For you that might not know, this is my third time doing this. This is the 2002 comprehensive plan. This is the 2010. And it has an interesting date on it, January twentieth, twenty eleven. So virtually a year ago, ten years ago. So I'm going to have a few questions, Chris. And something that you said at the very beginning, I think, is most important for my fellow town council people to hear. The comprehensive plan is really important, but the single most important thing coming out of this is the planning and zoning. Because that is what allows you to build or not build and then to sort of focus that growth on how you want it, how you really want it to look. Chris, could you go back to your presentation where you had the seawater rise? I'm going to start with a very specific, I'll say, recommendation. Go back and back to where, keep going to like where the map was. Yes, that one right there. Yeah. So can you point out where the wastewater treatment plan is?
If you can see my cursor, it's on the left-hand side.
This is just something I want you to consider since it's a long-term plan. Since I've been on town council, we've gone through BNR, ENR. And my expectation is in the next fifteen, twenty years, we're going to have to upgrade the wastewater treatment plan again. It's just the way it goes. And so one of the like recommendations you could give town council, coming from the comprehensive plan is try to identify parcels of land that are large enough to, and high enough, topography-wise, to place a wastewater treatment plant to avoid what's going to happen. And I'm talking like we, you know, as a recommendation, you And I'm talking like we, you know, as a recommendation, you could say, if in the next 10, 15, 20 years, a parcel, a parcel land comes available for purchase, the town ought to consider purchasing it as a new location for the wastewater treatment plant because of water rise. I think that's one way to mitigate that risk. It's just a recommendation. I think it was this map, although I have the current planning and zoning map up on another computer. This shows with your light blue kinda, that we're going to have places where it's going to be inundated with water potentially. My question to you is, when I look at the zoning districts that we currently have, we have like residential low-density, residential medium-density, we have commercial maritime. When we get a new planning and zoning map for this comp plan, are we going to have the same land use types, or are they going to be different?
I'm thinking they may be different. I'm working through a, while presented to the planning commission many months ago, a different approach. Not radically different, but, but different. For instance, just as an example, the, all the lands south of Fishing Creek, between Fishing Creek and Old Bayside Road, and even on both sides of Old Bayside Road, those are very sensitive environmental areas. In fact, some of them, those lots are going to be impacted by the same thing you see on these maps. I don't, I don't, I didn't show the map for that area, but I have it. Sea level rise and marsh wetland migration is happening on those lots as well. So what we're thinking is that rather than calling that residential low-density or medium-density, we call it resource preserve. In other words, you can continue to maintain your residence there, you can continue to develop there, but you can't subdivide those parcels into multiple lots in order to maximize the density. And you could do that now in some cases, because some of those lots are quite large. And particularly when water and sewer services are fully extended throughout the town, there would be a potential and perhaps even a built-in incentive to carve off a lot. And so the suggesting there would be that those areas really retain their single-family status, low-density, almost forested landscape perpetually.
I understand completely what you're saying. And based on that, if I understood your answer to a previous town councilman's question, our next step should be, as a town council, not as planning and zoning, but as a town council, if we're going to make any land use changes like this, then, I mean, my expectation would be that we'd get the comp plan, the planning and zoning land use map, and then specific planning and zoning code changes at the same time, so that we can ensure that everything melds together properly. Because it doesn't matter what's in the comp plan. What matters is what's in the planning and zoning map, the land use map, and that those land use designations then match what the expectations are in the planning and zoning code. And so that would be my, my expectation. I don't want a piecemeal thing. Last time we went through this 10 years ago, I believe there was a piecemeal approach a bit regarding the, the, the comp plan itself and the land use planning map. They have to be, they can be voted on separately, but any applicable changes can be presented as a series of amendments or ordinances or packages, you know what I mean? Melded together as one big picture.
And, and the implication of that is, is that it adds a couple of months to the process, but the reality is, is those, that time would have happened on the the approval side of the project. Now we're going to be adding them here in the beginning, which actually might be the, the best thing, because there's momentum, there's focus. We have everything lined up. We can provide a complete package. But that means that we have to have meetings on the zoning text amendments too, in addition to the comprehensive plan, right?
If you can give us a plan, a land use map that has different land use designations, like you no longer use the term maritime, or you no longer use the word resource conservation, and that does not match with the code, you have a problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, right.
And so, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I think, and I really want to encourage what Derek said about a crosswalk. That is the single best thing that you could provide us in the form of a, hopefully like a GIS, where we can overlay the two and you can see the changes, but if they need to be static PDFs, they need to be set PDFs. But I think that'd be really beneficial. And in the future, that also might help the planning and zoning meetings, because I've been looking at them on like YouTube and stuff, and if you sometimes have the planning and zoning map up, I think it would help people to exactly where you're talking about, because I know where it is, but sometimes it might be a little hard to keep up. Can you go to the one where you show the new town center or what a potential design of the new town center is? And thank you. You've done, you, you guys have done a great job, and I really personally like the approach that the planning commission is taking with the 35 feet and, and all that. They're really trying to implement that small-town feel that, at least I ran on, so I'm quite appreciative. When I look at this plan, though, I think it was, might have been, and I don't mean to misspeak, but I think it might have been Charlie, mentioned about mixed use. And you said that the planning and zoning commission are against having commercial and residential mixed. When I look at this, if we go, you pointed out where the town hall is, which is in the lower center. And we go a little bit to the left where the parking was that I think Greg brought up. If I go a little bit to left, to me that, are those all commercial establishments then, or are they commercial residential?
Well, actually, when I was referring to the mixed uses, I was, and stepping that down so that they're not going to be allowed, I was referring to those other smaller centers.
Right. In this, in this one, is it mixed or is it just commercial?
Well, I, the way that it's drafted now is it would allow for a mix. However, building height would be capped at 35 feet, and the planning commission has not been more specific about this than that. So if I could just...
So does this go against the commission's desire to not have mixed and residential together?
No, see, if you see this image I just pulled up, so there would be, say, a ground floor cafe or something, and then residential above within this area, within the, the town center, the area, but not...
No land use? Its own land use designation? A different land use?
Well, yeah, I guess you would call it a different land use in the sense that it would be residential mixed with commercial, if that's what you mean. Right now, the, in the commercial zone, you can have an apartment above a business. So we would probably call that mixed use rather than dwelling unit above commercial. It would be an allowable use, but it would have to meet, you know, it'd have to be approved as part of a site plan.
And, and also like seeing if we could somehow, or the developer would acquire the trader's parking?
Well, potentially. I mean, this is, this is really conceptual, and it just shows what possibilities exist. But yeah, in this case, it's, this part is contingent on traders, seeing that it perhaps is in its interest to develop part of its area. We don't know if that will ever come to pass, but if it were, this is the way that the arrangement of the, this block would take shape. It would be a gateway and entryway into a new kind of town center, roundabout idea, a space for, you know, outdoor events merging into Kellum's Field with a blue-green type of park setting, and then the, the rec fields. So it's a, it's a concept, and we would actually suggest that, once the comprehensive plan's done and the town wanted to, it would hire a, a firm to do a, a master plan or detailed plan. Now, as you recall, most of this, if not all of it, is owned by Chesapeake Beach. So conceivably, you could hire, you could do a competition. The, the developer with the best plan that provides the best ideas that meet your objectives could win, and you could be a partner if you wanted to bring that up, come to pass. There was some of the ideas we talked with the planning commission about. I don't know if that will mention that in such detail in the comprehensive plan, but certainly a, a public-private partnership might be necessary to bring this all to fruition.
Can you go back to the, the one where it had the flood plain, the 100-year flood? And go, yeah, keep going. Oh, that's a good one, right. That one will work. Where Fishing Creek is, I'm just curious, because I know that the Rod Mill, the Chesapeake Beach Bonne Resort, just got approval. And this map got me thinking that, the biggest complaint I got when I was campaigning this past time was obviously the parking garage. But my question pertains to water. When that whole thing was approved, and the way the bulkhead is on the south side, was the water displacement taken into account, the fact that we're going to have water rise, sea level rise? And that, that they're, they're, they're creating more of a, throughout their development with their bulkhead, creating more of a displacement of that water. It can't go south, it has to go north towards Windward Key. Was that sort of water rise at all taken into account throughout that whole approval process?
Well, all the work that was proposed was approved by FEMA as part of their review process. And they also raised the level of the topography too. So like, the, the blue that you see in their parking area would not be blue if we used current elevations that they rose, that they raised the topography.
Yeah, but water has to go somewhere, and so because they raised their topography, they're then displacing that water and pushing it elsewhere. Where else did they push that water when they bettered their property?
Right. Well, you know, that is a concern that we want to address in the comprehensive plan. And that's why we're recommending that the, the town think about the, the implication of these structural improvements, because every time there's a structural or physical barrier built, it has implications for other properties that are not protected. And you might know, there is a, a, a board established by town law for, for reviewing all work in the bulkhead or in the water or pier work, but it's not been instituted. It's in the zoning ordinance, and I think it's the harbor, I forgot, something committee that actually has jurisdictional review in the town over any work that gets done, that's attached to the land, that affects these things. And we're suggesting, I suggested to the planning commission that they make that a recommendation, that that body be reinstated, allow local experts to sit on it and review these projects so that they're done in coordination, that there's a master plan designed to understand what the implications are. Some areas probably ought to be, be allowed to flood naturally. Some areas where their buildings, you know, and permanent investment, like you have residential right here, you know, maybe that's where you, you put a physical barrier. But we have to understand the implications of that physical barrier there and here, or wherever the case may be. Here, a physical barrier along Fishing Creek would help protect the area behind it, but water can still get behind that physical barrier, right? So all these things have to be thought about in the context of a, a master plan that will help assure that that town center area is properly sited and developed.
Yeah, that was kind of my point, that we might, we might want to encourage that institution, that committee for that. And, and use the example I had of, of, you know, just because one property gets to build up their topography, that water displacement could create problems elsewhere. And so it's something that we should always kind of like, keep in mind. I guess I want to make sure, it goes without saying that, you know, when we do talk about the 35-feet height, I think that's a, a, a good thing, and it should be throughout the whole town, and not just in any set of specific zoning districts. So I think it should be throughout. And I look forward to, whenever planning and zoning can get that to us, that'd be great.
Ordinance has been drafted already, and it was the subject of a planning commission meeting, but it was pulled off the agenda because they were concerned that they weren't going to be able to get to it, because it was the night that the Rod and Real had proposed their architectural changes to the building, so they took it off the agenda. So it exists, and I'm happy to send it to you.
That'd be great.
It's out there, yeah.
And then, I guess this is a proper time. I'm not sure it was really brought up that much, but you know, we have that resolution regarding the moratorium, and I've been really thinking about this, and I'm in favor of it. I think it's a great request. And although you can't answer, Chris, I'm, just know that, you know, for the overall council, the mayor and Holly, that my only concern is, you know, whether we can be sued. It'd be good if there's no litigation involved. But I will say one thing, again, I have my trusty, trusty little comprehensive plan from 10 years ago. And if I turn to page eight, it says Harbor Vista, South and North, on page eight, right here. And so my argument would be, not having any idea who these five are, although I'll ask you in a second. Folks have had 10 years to do this. If they wanted to do it, they could have done it. As soon as someone hears that there's a possible 35-foot limit, they throw five different site plans at Chris? Even though they've been provided before, possibly? I think is, well, we know why they did it, because they're 35-foot height limit, because we're going through the comprehensive plan, because we're going to be doing land use. It's not like this is a new concept, and we're like cutting someone off from their knees. So they might say, one of those might be Stinness Place. Well, Stinness Place, if I turn over to page seven, a, a plan from 10 years ago is right here. And so I think you're, you're, I mean, I'm supportive of this moratorium. I think that if the five developers, I have a list of the plans that they had 10 years ago. If these are those plans, which I'll ask Chris about, which I don't know, and I, I have no idea who they are right now, then you just sort of like, you had your chance, dude, and you lost it. You lost it. Times change, desires change, planning commissions change. You had your chance to develop, you didn't do it within the planning, with the land you said existed. So, you know, I'm in support of the moratorium, if I understand it correctly, as long as, you know, obviously you can't be sued. So, Chris, who are those five? What developments were there? Because I am really curious.
Well, it's one applicant, and I believe that the applicant is Rod and Real Properties. Paul Woodburn brought the projects over, and he's the representing, the, the representing engineer.
Like, can I guess? I just want to guess. I'm going to say that one is Harbor Vista North, Harbor Vista South? Maybe Sunrise on the Chesapeake? No, that one's old. Stinness Place?
Yes.
Do I have, but I have them?
Chris and Valerie, if, if I can just, you know, stop for a second, I think we're getting a little too much into the weeds on this one. This is going to be before the council in a work session in, in March, when we talk about an ordinance as a result of action that the planning and zoning is, is, is proposed to, to take. I don't know that it's appropriate right now to keep going down this path for the, the overview of the comprehensive plan that we're asking of, of Chris. I think I'd like to keep it at that level and, you know, move on with this discussion and, and our meeting.
That's perfectly fine. I mean, I can, I can save my exhibit for then, whenever it's appropriate.
That'd be more appropriate.
Fine.
Thank you.
So just know that, you know, I'm, the more time that we can have to review this, if there's any, even though things can chase this up substantially, any draft chapters that we could have, I do think it'd be in our best interest as a town council and as a comp plan to, if we wanted to, over the long term, find a new place for the wastewater treatment plant, because it's only going to flood in 50 years, and that could be a problem, or even 30, according to this map, at a level that might be problematic. I'm not sure if the jetties have been taken into consideration going out from Fishing Creek. But we know that we have to dredge constantly. It'd be nice to be able to re-engineer those jetties, and that could be a recommendation coming out of the comp plan. Anything that could help support that idea. And I think that's basically all I had. Just, I think the more comprehensive packet that we can get, the better it will be to implement. um, the better it will be to implement. That's it.
Can I just say one thing? And not to, not to offer a correction, but just some context. Um, so this is the year twenty fifty with a two-point-one sea level rise. Um, and Jay has confirmed that the act, the essential functioning and the design and the capability of the wastewater treatment plant is not impacted by this. The driveway leading up to it would be, um, but the functioning and the integrity of this resource is not in question for the foreseeable future. Maybe well beyond twenty fifty. Um, but there, also, there are things that on-site that engineers can do, like elevating the critical parts. Um, so I, I just want to, I don't want folks at home to think that this is at serious risk uh, on par with other things like Maryland two sixty-one, which clearly will be impacted by flooding, uh, and is already impacted by flooding, as we know. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, I want to, for your time, I, I'd really like to let you go, move on with our meeting, if, if at all possible.
Mr. Mayor, can I just have, can I have one quick follow-up question that wasn't asked? And I'll be, and I'll be brief. So Chris, is there anything in the plan, in ju- just generally speaking at this time, uh, that would suggest or recommend the town procure property uh, that is currently owned by any residents or businesses? Is there anything in there that would lead anyone to suspect that, or to interpret that?
That the town would acquire property?
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean opportunistic, you know, purchasing, I just mean, uh, what it, yes.
What was that? Uh, Mr. Mayor didn't hear that.
I brought up the, the, the dirty words, eminent domain.
Oh.
The council was asking, is there any intention or any ideas or any plans in this comprehensive plan for the town to take such action?
Yeah, or even suggest it, yes.
Uh, no, not eminent domain, they, the planning commission did talk about the need for a neighborhood park. And the language that we discussed that will show up in the plan was, when an opportunity presents itself and the mayor and council would like to make a bid on property to acquire, we would, you know, recommend that.
Yeah, and that's perfectly reasonable.
Park, for instance.
Yeah, but no, no, no suggestions of eminent domain.
And, no, not at all.
Good, good, glad to hear that.
Let the record read, no eminent domain.
Right, I want, I wanted that on record, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to our next item, which is the deputy addition allotted to the town of, of Chesapeake Beach. Uh, Holly, I think you want to, uh, you want to take the lead on this?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so in fiscal year twenty-one, the town council budgeted to add a, a deputy. Uh, that ad was to be split amongst the current share agreement that we have with the town of North Beach, which is sixty-five percent Chesapeake Beach and thirty-five percent North Beach. The reason for that ad during our budgeting uh, session is our calls for service had increased substantially. And we were decreasing our self-initiated patrol checks, so there was a desire for the town to increase patrol tracks and provide more services. Um, due to COVID, we had held on that addition to reassess at the first of the calendar year of twenty twenty-one. Um, at this time, we do not have uh, an agreement that North Beach would share in the cost of this additional deputy. However, uh, it is within the town's budget to add this deputy at a hundred percent to the town of Chesapeake Beach, if it's the desire of town council. Um, we, we do believe that um, adding the deputy at this time for the remainder of the fiscal year allocated to Chesapeake Beach a hundred percent would be beneficial and continue to be beneficial with the increase in recreational services that we're proposing within the Kellums complex. Um, we understand we're likely going to still have some COVID restrictions um, coming into the next seasonal uh, time for the town. Uh, but, so, we could always, uh, if North Beach plans to come on board at a later time, we could continue to share those costs. But at this time, we're asking to just go ahead and move forward with what we had budgeted, um, allocated to the town a hundred percent for the rest of the, the, the year. And again, that is within our budget.
Yeah, thank you, Holly, and just FYI, this, uh, we know this is going to, you know, we're going to go into the, uh, the, the budget discussions beginning in the, in the March work session, but since this just came up, and it's something that the council talked about at prior meetings, we thought it would, you know, we just wanted to share the information with you now. So, so having said that, do we have any, any questions? And if so, I'll begin with Valerie.
Uh, yeah, Holly, um, with, so this will be, except for emergency dispatches. A dedicated Chesapeake Beach police officer, is that correct? So there's no like, if the farmer's market was going on, there's no trolling the boardwalk down in North Beach, there's no, um, this is a one-hundred percent time, except I understand emergency calls. I get that part of it. But the, is that correct, that one-hundred percent of this deputy's time will be in Chesapeake Beach?
Yeah, so we would have nine deputies split between North Beach and Chesapeake Beach, and then this would be the second deputy that would be assigned solely to the town of Chesapeake Beach. Again, if North Beach decides not to, to still participate, there's a chance that they could want to participate. But at this time, yes, it would be two assigned solely to town of Chesapeake Beach.
And is that other one that's assigned solely to Chesapeake Beach, is that the detective or investigator that we hired a year back or so?
That actually is the sergeant, um, which we are working on possibly realigning that and making that position at the deputy role. Uh, so two deputies assigned to Chesapeake Beach versus the sergeant moving forward, we're still working through that with the sheriff's department.
And would this new position allow us to do more, more patrolling, like on the boardwalks?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Would it allow for more like biking or walking to the boardwalks?
So that, that's the plan, um, to increase the self-patrol check, so on bike, foot, and, and cruiser. Yes, all of our, uh, the railway trail and the heritage trail as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, the only question I had was about the railway trail, because I, I've never seen uh, police out there, not that I have any need to. Um, but I was curious if that would be included, if, if we end up, if I understand this correctly, and we end up um, footing the bill, uh, I think I might be okay with that, and then we can um, have them covering some uh, places that we, that we would like, that maybe aren't covered right now. Do I understand that right, Holly?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, Larry?
Uh, my questions have pretty much already been asked, I just wanted to offer just a sidebar unrelated to this discussion. Many of you probably saw the news today that Mike Evans has announced that he will not be running for sheriff again in twenty twenty-two, so we're going to be electing a new sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Greg?
Um, yeah, I have a clarification, Holly. Um, you said it was within budget, um, have we already included an additional deputy uh, in our budget that, that we haven't hired yet?
Yes, this is the deputy.
Okay, um, so I guess we already, have we are, like, did we just budget for the deputy, but we really didn't discuss whether or not we were going to have one? I, I'm in support of it a hundred percent, and I'm fine with the town paying a hundred percent. Uh, I don't have any issues with any of that, I think it's important. Uh, we're following um, the news. Um, I just wanted to, uh, I guess make sure that I was clear that the budget that we already have approved has room in here for, it's about a hundred thousand, I think, a year or so. Um, roughly for to add a deputy there, um, and we've already got it budgeted, and so next year, there won't be an increase in the budget of another hundred thousand. Is that right?
That's right, the, the remainder, remainder portion of this year is actually only going to cost the town uh, thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, so we, in terms of cost for services for the year, will be less than had, we had expected this, this fiscal year.
That, that was all, thank, I'm in full support, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so yeah, I had a, just a question, I mean, I think this is fine, I know we talked about this previously, and I don't really have a problem with hiring um, a deputy, just out of, I was trying to think back prior to the last administration even, I remember there being a big announcement about bike patrols in the beaches, that kind of thing. And I've, I don't remember seeing those, you know, last, in the last four years so much, there was a while there that it did seem like we had uh, the officers biking through town uh, down the boardwalks, and that was probably, I want to say five years ago, six years ago. Um, and it's taped, seemed to taper off, I was just curious if someone, um, Holly or Mayor, or maybe Valerie remembers uh, some of that history uh, on, on that, and I would just be interested in kind of seeing the number of officers who's patrolled our town, you know, through time and how that's changed at some point, uh, you know, going forward. Um, but in terms of this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you like, I can, I can respond to what you said.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with you, I, I really like when they're on foot, like when they're on the bike. Uh, we did have a lot of that, that went on, you know, years back, uh, I've noticed it, it was going on in our, our boardwalk right here.
Yeah.
Um, I guess pre-COVID, I, you know, I was noticing, I, I even got, you know, some calls from citizens telling me, I think it was multiple times about how, how wonderful they were, and the, the deputy got off his bike and, you know, met everybody, shook their hand, so this was definitely happening, you know, under your administration, our administration. But I do agree with your assessment that it's a great thing, I mean, I'm in a hundred percent, you know, support of that. And, you know, as I said, we had this here as an FYI item, because, you know, we didn't really need to put it on the agenda, but I know y'all are in support. And, and, and I have to add that one of the things that the town administrator has brought to the table is we're getting more accountability, for lack of a better word, um, on our, our police enforcement dollar. You know, that we really do want them spending more time in town limits, the town's paying for it, we want you more in town, and we don't just want to hear, yeah, I was there, we want to know, you know, the whens and the whys and the accountability, so we're doing a great job in that aspect, so. But in, in terms of the bike, I'm always glad to hear somebody bring it up, because it was a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, I'd really like, if you can get more, that'd be wonderful. Um, all right, well, thank you, that's really all the questions I had.
Okay, uh, lastly, Derek?
Uh, yes, thank you, so I, I'm in favor of this generally, um, but kind of going, going a little bit off on a small tangent, if you'd indulge me for a minute, so, you know, the, in, in our four-plus years, this is the second new deputy that we've brought on, and, and I'm for that, um, but, you know, deputy, these deputies can't be everywhere. So I think there's real, there's opportunity to integrate new technology to supplement, you know, what the deputy provides, what they provide, you know, whether, and for instance, uh, you know, speeding is always an issue, especially in some of the residential areas, uh, you know? Could we ask them as part of this agreement, because we just, you know, we, we do provide a lot of money uh, for these deputy services uh, every year? To provide some of that technology they may have, you know, for instance, speed trailers that can be moved around, you know, to be, you know, where, where the deputies are not. Uh, there, and I think, I'm sure there's other things as well that they have that could help supplement their, you know, what, what they provide, you know, for public safety. Um, and in some cases, I think that's something that the town should consider, for instance, like removable speed bumps, uh, where they could move them around and, and target, you know, areas of town that are perpetually uh, find speeders, things like that. So I think there's opportunity for both the town and for the county. Uh, if, if we can perhaps engage in some of those conversations as well, and not, not necessarily just always adding more deputies, which I'm, I'm, again, I'm in favor of, but I think there's other ways that we could probably more uh, efficiently address some of the issues we have in town, public safety-wise. Uh, if we in, integrate not only our, our deputies, but also some of that technology that might be available. That's really my only comment.
I appreciate the comment, and um, before we move on, does, does anybody on the council have one last comment on this issue? And then we'll go into, into closed session. Okay, uh, I'm, can I entertain a motion to close the work session under statutory authority of the Maryland Addicted Code pursuant to general provisions, Article three dash three oh five B, sub, subsection seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice pertaining to a contract at the waste, at the water recollection treatment plant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okey-dokey, Holly, you're, you're, you're taking a full break room, or?
Just give me one second.
Something, something didn't work out, Holly, we were in the breakout room.
One second, I'm trying to figure out what's going on here.
We were all in there except for you, so, if that helps.
Uh, we were all kicked out of the breakout room.
Sorry about that, give me one second, let's see, I'm going to try this one more time. Sorry about that. Give me one second. Let's see. I'm gonna try this one more time.
Just so everyone knows, you look like you've, everyone's defaulted to mute, so you might have to unmute yourself.
All right. Okay, um, is there a motion to reopen the public meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it, we'll begin with the council lightning round, Valerie, if you don't mind, I'll begin with you.
I really don't have much this evening, I just want to say that I really appreciate update on the town plan, it's an extremely important thing that we do, one with the land use zoning maps. Really appreciate that opportunity to talk to Chris.
Thank you, Charlie.
Just a quick update that we got the final plan from RK and K for the Waukaw Community Group. I have taken a brief look at it and will hopefully have more to report on once our committee has a chance to look at it at council meeting on two Thursdays from now. And one of the sections in that document, it gets specific into implementation and that should be the fun part, so we'll look forward to learning more about that. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, Larry.
Um, look forward to the comprehensive plan, as we've all said, I'm looking at this as a true opportunity for all of us to leave our positive mark on our town for decades to come, so I'm really looking forward to entering into the discussion of the comprehensive plan and hoping that someday maybe my grandkids can come see it actually implemented. The second thing is I just also wanted to pass along congratulations and thanks to Holly and Jay and everybody on Public Works for the great job that they've been doing with these storms and I just heard the weather tonight, it looks like we've got another one coming in later this week, so keep up the good work, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Larry, and Greg.
Yeah, I'd just like to circle back and a couple of comments on what we were discussing this evening. Regarding the comprehensive plan, there's a lot that's covered at the planning and zoning meetings. And I plan to do my best to, I pledge, I think I've attended the last three of them, and I know they're on video too, so you don't have to be live, but I think it's important for, with, given, particularly given the timeline, that there's a timeline that's being laid out here, that everybody try to have the fullest understanding they can along the way. So my intention will be to work within the timeline prescribed, but in no way can we afford anyone or any part of an update to be rushed, real or perceived. So I think there's just some to be seen here, move forward cautiously there, something that came up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to Bruce Wall, I think, about looking into hiking that railway path, that sounds like a pretty neat field trip. And per Councilman Favre's comment regarding technology and adding more law enforcement. That's definitely a 21st century statement there, and all of us, not just Town Hall, but in law enforcement as well, we're looking for ideas from them, how to purchase new technology that can give us better coverage and take a little pressure off of them in particular areas, I'm not really sure, that's a discussion for another day. But Sharon, please don't write this part down, but looking for deputies in a way is like whale watching in Maui. And I spent a lot of years out in Hawaii and I'd see people pull over to the side of the road and they'll pull out with their family lined up and they'll say, okay, we're watching for whales, they don't see one in five minutes and say, shit, there's no whales around here. But they're there and they're coming around, and I think that our coverage is, might be a little better than some of the residents feel that it is, but I'm definitely in full support of adding the deputy biking on foot, I'm sorry, policing on biking and by foot seems very small town to me, so, good night, everybody.
Thank you, and I agree, Keith.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, yeah, I just want to echo some of Larry's comments, when we were talking about the comprehensive plan, I was thinking, you know, before I was elected, the last, under the last administration, I was on the Planning and Zoning Board, and we were trying to, you know, figure out how to enact some of this, how to make change in the town, and it's so gratifying to see that the council and the planning and zoning are all kind of lining up and we're making those steps to kind of make that vision come true. And what, you know, I know a lot, some of you have been working on it a longer, much longer time than I have, but even, you know, six, eight years, wow, and to see it, see it starting to actually happen, this is a great feeling, feeling. So I want to thank everybody and the work they've done on that, both on the council and on the planning and zoning, and Chris, and it's just been great, and all the committee members on the different committees, that's wonderful. A couple of specific items I wanted to just mention, Holly's gonna be posting these, but I wanted to just mention them, this came out from the Calvert County Public School System. The Child Nutrition Department of Calvert County Public Schools will distribute grab and go meals on Wednesday, February 10th, due to the inclement weather forecasted for our area on Thursday and Friday. The pickup window will, for each site, will be 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., the sites include Windy Hill Middle School, Huntington High School, Calvert High School, Southern Middle School, and Patuxent High School. The meal kits continue to be available free of charge, and for parents and guardians wishing to pick up meals without their children being present, they must pre-register, but I'll let you let folks go online, I think Holly probably will have it up by tomorrow if it's not already up, but, and then also, there is a teen mental health support group that's out there, I know with COVID, it's been very stressful for a lot of us, and teens and kids have been suffering as much as anyone, so this is a peer-led mental health support group for grades nine through 12, and it's offered every fourth Friday of each month at 5:00 p.m. via Zoom, and and there's, there'll be information on joining this, you can contact East Johnny Youth Center at Comcast.net, or call 410-326-1150. And that information was provided to us from the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, so with that, I want to just thank everybody, and y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, sir, and lastly, Dirk.
Yes, thank you, yeah, so Greg, I was really wondering where you're going with that whale watching story, but in the end, that was a pretty good analogy, so, thank you for that. Two things, so last week, I had the opportunity to talk with a local Girl Scout troop, help them with their democracy badge, and as part of that discussion, they introduced me to initiative that they're working towards a bronze award, and essentially, it's a community service type project that they're looking for, you know, very small footprints around North Calvert County to, you know, to build this project that they, that they are working on, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna steal their thunder, but just let you know, we, we off reached out or offered them the incentive to come to one of our meetings as a group and share that briefly, so I don't know if they've reached out to you, Holly, but we may get a presentation, you know, in the next couple of months on that, so I think that would be kind of exciting, something that we, you know, we may want to partner with them and help them achieve, you know, help them work towards achieving their goals, so that was something that we talked about in our committees, that maybe we can partner with some of our youth to, you know, to some of their initiatives and help them along, so we may have one coming in one of our next couple of meetings. But, and then lastly, I want to thank Chris and Holly for arranging it, but thank Chris for coming in tonight. I, for one, have heard a lot of different things about the comprehensive plan, and so getting a first, you know, really semi-formal view of it tonight was appreciated, so and the opportunity to discuss, drill down a little bit to discuss some of those things, I think that were, I think this was a good meeting, so, thank you, Holly, thank you, Mayor, for, for putting this agenda together. That's all I have.
You're welcome, sir, is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Do a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
And the ayes have it. Good night, everybody.